Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Should be joining us here soon.
Okay. We also have anything else?
That's it.
We also have a submission of letter resignation from our treasurer, Paul Harlow, which I've just received, which I'd like to address on the communication and public comments, if that's okay. But anyone has any objection to that? Okay, great. Okay, moving forward, no more adjustments. Acceptance of the minutes for February 9th, 2022.
Will we accept the minutes of the meeting on February 9th? That's printed.
Okay. Motion to accept the minutes for February 9th, 2022 have been moved and seconded. Yes, sir.
Nate Scott. I agree with Dean in minutes. In answer to Nate Scott's question regarding assistance to residents by Tina from the English Department of Storm, I did ask that evening about that. Thanks for the answer. Another question is, as it goes on to say that Mr. Hodgson said those directions had been provided to FEMA, inspectors have looked at any good residence in English. I've never had anybody reach out to me regarding my demo. No inspectors. I've never given a number to anybody, so just want to make that point. Go over to the inspectors and expect it. And I'll say A and R has moved back out to me, right? I called him as well. Just want to make that point that I'm not aware of any inspector.
Check into it now.
Do you want the minutes amended to reflect that?
I mean, I just was pointing.
Pointing what?
Yeah.
The minutes are not true, are they?
Yeah, the minutes are complete. But thank you for your point of clarification, sir, as usual. Okay, motion is made and seconded. Acceptance of the minutes for February 9th, 2022. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's hereby adopted. Thank you. Communication and public comment. This point I'd like to address Paul Harlow, treasurer, many years town citizen. So many things for our town after years, and thank you so much for everything that you do and have done and been there for us through thick and thin long before I got the privilege to serve the board and certainly many others. This acceptance, is this something we need to formalize? Or just?
Yes, you need to accept his resignation.
But also just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us. Sure, thanks. At this time, I will then accept the motion to accept Paul Harlow's resignation, resignation, excuse me, as a town treasurer for Town of Westminster. Motion for the acceptance of Paul's resignation has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you.
Yes, and a hearty thank you from everyone. All those opposed? Accepted. Thank you, Paul, very much. Okay, unfinished business. You wanted to move the meeting venue discussion update with Historical Society up to the front of the board. Are they present?
Are they present?
They're waving yes.
I think someone's waving yes.
Yes, we are here.
Aye.
Yes. Both of us are here. Yes.
Everyone is well? Hope your families are well? Okay.
Could they state their names?
Yes, could you please do that?
I'm Jesse Haas, the president of the Historical Society Org.
And I'm Rachel Scott, the curator of the Westminster Historical Society Museums.
Hi, and welcome, and for all you both do for all of us in the preserving our history. Did you want to lead the discussion, Russell?
Actually, I'd like them to explain to you their option for us for our town hall.
For the town hall meeting space?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. If you guys want to go ahead and start.
Right, okay, well, I'm going to just speak briefly. I had not attended one of these meetings here on Zoom in the firehouse. I certainly have an even better appreciation of the problem you're having here. It is a difficult space. You know, I had heard that there were issues and we were hoping that we could help the town out and talk it over. Rachel and Russ, I think, have come up with a plan that has been unanimously approved by our board where we can open up the space in a way that I think Russ feels will work for him. And I'll let Rachel explain what that is, but it's a lot simpler than I think we were originally thinking we might need to do or that I might have overthought and thought about things on wheels and so forth. But Rachel, as usual, has a better plan and I'll let her speak to that.
Thank you, Jesse. Basically, my plan is that I would move the cases so that you are not barricaded into a small space so that you will have a lot more open space. And the cases will be moved around to, around the hearse. Some cases will be put behind the hearse. I understand how large the hearse is and how much space it takes. If I could, I would wave a magic wand and the hearse would not be there and that would give us all a lot more space. However, we have the hearse, so we're going to work with it. And cases may be placed in a position so that they will not need to be moved. As the museum is set up right now, you guys are really blocked in. And I can't imagine how difficult that is, particularly during these times that we're having with COVID, to feel that you have enough space. So the barricade will be moved and will be placed around the edge of the hearse and further into the museum space that we are currently using. I'd like, that's a workable solution for the select board?
Got it. Comment input?
It's hard for me to visualize what the space is going to be like. I mean, do you think, you know, if we, like right now, we have eight, 10 people sitting around this room besides us, the select board? And there are likely the times when we might have 10 people or 15 people, but we always, you know, sort of makes something happen for that. But what do you think that the space that you're offering is moving enough to take 10 or 15 people besides us?
I believe that that will be easily accommodated. The cases that you now have that sort of form your little room will be moved away. So there'll be a lot more seating available for you. And we won't have to constantly be putting them back to create that your space. They will stay where they are. The exit door will be much more accessible to the fire escape as the doors to the stairwell.
Sounds good. That's great.
Sounds good.
It'll be very, the space will be much more open, but kind of like the high school. You know, where there's no walls or to the ceiling.
Nice to work with you. And if once in a while, I thought of that afterwards, while we're having a meeting before the meeting or during the meeting, if one of you would get on and next to introduce a section of what's going on in there, because I don't think it's ever been on TV. If we're meeting there, we took 10 minutes to say, here, this is stuff so we can start to educate the people of Westminster on what is up there. And to take 10 minutes out of our time to have you maybe walk us through one of the displays and what it's all about, I think would be well appreciated.
Well, I appreciate that offer very much, Craig, and we would love to do that. It's been something in our minds that we would love to, you know, have the board especially see we've got a really nice exhibit on the massacre right now. And as we are in a few years coming up to the 250th anniversary of that, you know, it's a pretty cool anniversary and we're thinking of ways we might celebrate it. So we would love that opportunity. And I certainly appreciate you extending that offer to us. That would be fun.
Terrific.
Thank you very much.
So with your permission, then I think we would like to try that for our March 9th meeting and see how it goes. Does anyone?
I think we just need some muscle to move some of those cases. And I think Russ indicated that he either had muscles or had access to muscle that we could slide those around, so.
Yes, yeah.
I will call Russ and we can make arrangements to move things when it's convenient for Russ as well for me, that we can be up there to move the cases. And then also, do I understand you would like to have a tour of the museum on the 9th? Am I understanding that, Craig?
No, it doesn't have to be on the 9th. I said sometime, once we're up there, one of the meetings we could, doesn't have to be on the 9th, some other time. Let's get it done this 9th and you get comfortable, but I think we could put you on the agenda sometime, maybe even once or twice during the year to introduce a section of it or give it some education about and more people see what's going on upstairs too.
All right, let's plan to make a plan on that then. We will be having an exhibit opening also in November on some of the Native American artifacts that we have that were found in Westminster. So we could, I could see us doing a couple of tours of it. And so, great. And I wanted to say I appreciate you moving us up on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes, we really appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your accommodation. Again, all you do for our town, I mean, without your Herculean efforts to preserve our history and to do all you do to keep it safe and accessible, we wouldn't have it. And so, thank you. And thank you for getting us hopefully back into the town hall.
Hope it all works great.
Yes, we hope it works.
Yeah, I think it will.
I do too.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll also like to take this time to thank the chief and everyone here in the fire department for accommodating us during COVID and making the necessary audibles where necessary to have us here, keep everyone safe, and go the extra mile as he always does and it will keep, make sure we're all safe. Thank you, chief, and thank you for letting us be here. Okay, moving on then to Hartley Hill Road.
It's still there.
The road?
Tabled it.
I hope so.
The road's still there. Because you tabled it to get more information read and absorbed in your packets, so it's still there for you to make a decision. It's a hard decision. You've got our legal opinion in your packet again. This is a big step. It's a costly step.
It is.
One of your options is to bring it up at a town meeting? Or it's?
Fletcher can raise it with Larry and get it back.
Yes.
So we really need those two to have a discussion for it?
Yes, but it's a moot point if you table it and indefinitely type deal. If you're interested, well, then, yes, have them meet, have them discuss it again. You're paying for both, I mean, you're paying for our legal counsel to weigh on this. So if you're not interested, then don't spend money. If you're interested, then of course, they'll meet.
Has everyone made the, has everyone reviewed the documentation sufficiently where they feel they could make that decision? Or would you like additional time to do that?
I thought after I read it that the way Fletcher was talking, that Larry would back and wanted to meet with him, and I would respect the amount of money and time that Larry's put into it. So we're going to pay for that meeting. I don't think it'd be more than an hour or so. Let the two attorneys discuss it and come back with what they would recommend. I can't believe they can't come to some kind of agreement before we invoke yes or no.
So, anyone else?
And I assume Russ, Larry's coming back to Florida before April?
I would assume so. I can't answer that.
So are we?
Family issues.
Are we adequate with Craig's recommendation that we allow the attorneys to meet? And this test this? Okay. Okay, so Russell set that up or you'll convey that?
Surely will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, budget separation, highway town cost update.
So I was talking to Chip the other day, the separation that we've been talking about, keeping the total, still the total for the town and highway together, but having the two actual expenditures, expenditures and revenue separated will cost us about $1,400 in man.
For the higher limb to?
That's correct.
Just a one time? It's a one time?
It's a one time.
Yeah.
We're trying to, we've been talking about keeping the numbers simple, meaning keeping our accounting numbers for the town the same and the highways would be, the first three numbers would be changed so that the, what we're used to for accounts will be easy, easy to transition to. And Chip had no issues with that portion of it. And I don't want to speak for you, but I did.
So $1,400 would?
Chase going in? Like the highways?
It would enable us to compare next year with the book and then the book that we give to the voters would be?
It would start July 1st, as our auditor said. Chad, you would beg that we didn't do this until July for the next fiscal year, which gives us plenty of time to get that squared away. The budget is the budget, but what's going to take the time is to take the wages and benefits and split them as we're not, and they're all on one line. So we've got to split them up, just got to realize how much each person makes, and then the budget, that the separation would be clear and precise of all of the expenditures for town and highway.
But for this to work, you have to take the money out of this year's budget, even though it's not going to stack until July. Correct?
The $1,400, yeah. That's correct.
Would have come out of this year's budget unless?
That's correct.
Unless they delay filming us until July.
So can I ask a few questions? So typically, when I do renumbering the charge of accounts and break funds out, I have the capacity to make it look like it's always been that way for FY '21, for '22 year and now, and when you start '23. Clearly, the auditor likes the idea of staying the way it is for '22 and then being different for '23. So the approach, concept is not a break apart '22 to look like it would have looked if you had a separate fund. What I'm hearing in the discussion is add a new fund, stop using accounts in the general fund that were for highway use and establish new accounts in a new fund and start from scratch. That's a different approach than what I normally take. And that can be done as well, because I'm just going to load accounts without any budgets or any history. And yet, then it's a maintenance function in payroll, because accounts payable, you can start using the new numbers. So that's a different story than what I had anticipated needing to do. So.
I'm going to need more clarification, I guess.
Then typically, when you split, you take all the history that you have for two years and you reclassify it all. So when you sit back to do a comparison for budgeting in '24, you actually have a picture that looks like what '22 looked like, what '23 looked like.
You put the actual?
With numbers, meaning you analyze even the numbers that were audited. You analyze them and break them into the highway fund separately. They're still the same totals. They're just separated for analysis. And that is more work than simply adding a new fund and moving the highway, if you will, to it, starting on a single day. And for the auditor, it's easier to do that for them. For you, what do you want?
I, speaking personally, I thought the one you just said, I didn't expect to see history of all the payroll and everything in this highway brought out. But we've made so many changes and ball been here long enough too. We keep changing, so sometimes the voters can't see because we changed how we numbered it or how we moved it over here. So we start over again and next year when we come to them, they don't have anything to compare, but still the bottom line is the bottom line and we can explain it for a reason, you know?
I think that's, I like your position on it, and I think it does make it more comfortable when you need to find out what's going on and it's not like you created a new world, you just changed the way you look at it. But I think that's a good idea. That's mine.
Which way?
So I'm not clear on which is?
Yeah, I was going to say which way?
No, but you're saying that you have the history, a couple of years.
Yeah, but if we actually do it, the best time to change the record accounts is right in June 30.
But the $1,400, which way were you doing $1,400? Is that what we're confused at?
That's that way.
The very, it's not fresh?
No, that's where, I take '21, rebuild it to look like we want in '23, and then you have three years of comparison.
And that's for the $1,400?
Yeah.
Oh, then that's going to change my mind too.
Yeah.
I just thought the $1,400, we were going to pay more to do that.
No.
Okay.
No, this exercise, you have an example of this already done.
Right.
And basically, it's take that and make it real.
Simple to say that the three-year comparison you proposed in $1,400 would be more transparent, wouldn't it?
I guess the term transparency is really a loose term. It allows you comparability as if you had your highway separated each year. Because you really don't know right now what was '21's highway surplus or deficit standing on. What was general funds surplus or deficit standing on? One of the topics today was what is the fund balance? What do we have available? It isn't combined right now. It is not highway or general. It's combined, the two together, referred to as general. So what I'm offering is that if we do this, you will, we'll have to determine what a fund balance was for '21, for highway. You're going to take action theoretically tonight on an audited fund balance, of which a portion of it might have been highway. That's the way life works, you know? As well then, the current year that you're in, the reports you've been seeing would change and you begin immediately to see your highway broken out. It is not what Chad knew it would look like, but if it suits your purposes, then the auditor audits and others. And we're not changing the total budget. We're not going to change the total in actions. We're just going to classify it as highway or general or whatever. Pretty simple.
That's your suggestion too?
That's my suggestion. I've been known to contradict auditors, so.
It's what, is the ideal way?
I didn't understand it for whatever time that for the $1,400. I thought you were going to say it's going to cost more.
No. No, I've done this in other communities. I have tools already written. I just have to modify them for your structure. And the exercise takes time to analyze the data set. All the highway guys are grouped together, but all the benefits are combined and the benefits of everyone else. And so you really have to look at what is that total? What should it be? And you're going to best guess what the budget number is going to be split. The total of two is going to be the same, but the highway benefits are right now not as quickly identified the cost of highway. And they are a good chunk of money. In one community, when I separated it, their highway measured one of $250,000. How's that possible? I said, you never considered your highway insurances, your highway employee benefits? Just the liability insurance for the equipment? That stuff was not in the highway budget and wasn't part of highway cost.
So you're going to work on this, but we are going to go over to the voters with a budget for, we're going to go to the voters coming in, actually in two months. We're not going to change that because that's already been done in the book.
Correct.
But you're going to start to come back to us and really, we only see that in the select board for just when we go to the voters and then we put that book away. We don't really look at it again anyways. As long as we keep, and we're going to get that report and we can see it in the follow-up, I think it's going to be great.
Yeah. The totals again, the total budget passed, assuming the total budget we have.
Right.
Just broken into two different funds.
Any more discussion?
Do we need to have Russ come back and show us where he's going to come up with the $1,400? Are you comfortable?
It's going to be done by the hour.
Yeah.
So just to? Not to exceed $1,400?
Yeah.
So if that's what you want, then that's good. So we should make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and contract MREC for not to exceed $1,400 and break out the highway funds.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
Motion is made to contact MREC to not to exceed $1,400 to go ahead and quote, "break out the highway funds." All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks, Chip.
Motion adopted. Thank you, Chip.
When would you like to see a set of financials with everyone?
As soon as you can.
Yeah.
Before you leave the room.
There you go.
I can sell to a truck.
Just as soon as we can.
Yeah. When's your next normal set of financial presentation is, would be normally in April?
That's correct.
So if that's your normal next set by April, your board meeting and you get your quarterly list, you'll have your set of financials?
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to scheduled deficiencies, treasurer update. But we don't have a treasurer.
Didn't even move, didn't even move when you said move there.
In your package, you have two model policies or two of the items that they wish to see, which is fraud and investment. So we're not dropping the ball on the manual. We're going to continue. I have, we've been very busy on doing some different things, but Chip will help us continue the move to get that manual completed. And I'm sure we can count on Paul to answer a few questions if we need him.
How close are we roughly? Do you know?
75%?
The answer is you're never done. Because the rules will change.
Yeah.
The conditions will change. And whatever comes after our vote will change. And whatever comes after our vote will change. So, you'll evolve, Adam. So that's, that's the only way you can treat it. When auditors work? If they have done, done the same service for 20 years, they, the more they know, the deeper they can get into looking. The deeper they can get, the more detail they can file. But if at the surface, just in general, things are a mess, they're never gonna find the one employee who was taxed inappropriately on that one. They can't get to that level if they're up here trying to fix bigger debt. So, that's why I say your, your policies will totally change, and, and should be flexible living documents. General gist, for me, is to say, what is our intention for, and I'll use, again, a term, fund balance? What's our intention? To reserve a fund balance, to keep a fund balance, to keep a balance that's unreserved? And there's policies for that.
So that would not be part of the financial manual, which is a manual, as it would be a policy.
The, the tool that I just gave you, yes, that could separate policies.
So it would be...
But that is a function of accounting, right? To adhere to the policy, how do you do it?
How do you do it? Right. That's what it is. That's what the manual is, how do you do it? You take the policy, and then this is how you, you know, structure.
Manual would, would, yeah, say, see, such and such policy.
Right. And it would have the steps and how you, um, trade with fire or whatever you do.
And for on the subject, thank you very much. Model investment policy with guidance, I believe it's the first time this document has appeared in front of me, yes?
Yes.
And suddenly was thrown into the mix. But we have had this conversation before, at present, no funds of this town are at risk in the stock market, that's correct, right?
That's correct.
And there's never been a formal policy that permits that, right?
That's correct.
So in reviewing this model policy, we would not be reviewing any changes, for example, for something as negligent as that type of a policy.
That's correct.
Did you say negligent?
Negligent, reckless, foolish, whatever.
I know what it means.
Um, okay. So this is in there for what purpose?
Because they asked us to.
Okay.
That if one of the deficiencies was to look into investment policy.
Statement? Investment policy statement?
Statement. It can be just a statement, if that's what the town wants.
Currently, all of our investments are in short-term liquid funds, correct?
I can't speak for the, um... Someone here? For the, you know, it's the other one, uh, so, P Harrison's group.
Yeah, one of the, yeah, one of the P Harrison came one time, and that, wanted to know if they could move it to a different source for funding.
That's correct.
But before that, we had some of the, the committees were actually, uh, back in, along for elements here, I think he was on the board, but we couldn't, we never got a report of where the money was and what was going on, so that, that was all brought back to were under our control. Before that, it wasn't.
So they do invest that separately, and he did come to you and ask for permission, and it's a very low, um...
How many years ago was this?
I was here, so, probably was maybe? They used to have a report, like, every year, so...
I've only seen them once, and that was the time that they asked for permission. You remember Paul?
No.
Does it fall, Paul, does that fall under the rubric of the select board? That particular fund? Our liability?
Oh, I agree.
It would.
But you did give him permission to, to, he, uh, invest in accordance with a low, um, risk, um, investment.
Um, not to, when our banker was here from, uh, Mascoma, she was unequivocally clear that the funds were put into very safe bonds.
I can check into this, this is...
Yeah.
I'm not...
I said, I, no, I think it's very good that you, this has been brought up, but I'd like to, probably good that we, um, have an accounting of our funds and how they are, make sure that they're dispersed in accordance with the safest possible, most secure manner, unless there's objection to that thinking, no?
So, I have a list, I have a list of Westminster accounts for purposes of reconciliation.
Terrific.
And there's 15 to 18 of them. They all list either Mascoma, Community Bank, Serenbank, Walpole, or T Bank.
Great, thanks very much.
It does not indicate that these would then be investments other than, commonly in towns, just based on 30 years of experience, um, they may have investments that are both cash and stocks through Edward Jones, in which stocks are managed by Edward Jones by instruction in low-risk areas. And when you need to draw, they, they sell, put it into cash, and they send you cash. Um, that is most common. There's, there's an agency like that.
That came to my attention for a town recently nearby, that's why I was asking that question when this popped up.
Yeah.
And exactly with that same broker dealer.
Yeah.
But from what I understand, that, that's a different account, that's not part of the general funding. That was a trust.
Trusted agencies.
Trust and agency.
Yeah. Where it's, if you will, from what I can tell, totally extendable trust, by the way.
Okay.
In that case.
Okay.
And so the investment vehicle, even if it loses, it meets what the trust had been set up with. And there are, um, conditions now in which, if you have a trusted agency fund that's under $100,000, you can request through probate to be relieved of the responsibility of managing that trust. Because the amount that it can produce is not worth the cost of managing it. So, it, as long as you distribute it to the purpose of the fund, you, you no longer have to manage that fund as a, as a town. Back in the day, five grand was a lot of money. Thirty-five grand's not enough, man.
Right.
I'm pretty sure the monthly account, there's some very low interest there.
I, I figure out.
Very low interest. Yeah.
But that might be changed.
You do a monthly very reconciliation, sometimes it's 31 cents.
Yeah.
Two dollars and 50 cents.
Yeah. And if you were paid by the hour, you didn't make enough.
Correct.
But at least it's been positive, not negative seven, not negative 13, or negative nine, right?
Ron does engage off curve.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Any more discussion on this matter? Thank you, uh, Chip. Okay, 7/29/2021 storm.
We are still on that deficiency with the treasurer's thing of resignation, we still need to talk about.
Okay.
How do we meet our, our needs in the meantime? With Paul resigning, she will no longer be signing checks after this girl that's in front of you.
I was gonna question, when she got on, wasn't that by Paul getting on, so then Paul would have to accept her resignation before he, he resigned? How do we do that? I was just reading that.
Probably it's true, because he hired her.
Yeah.
But it was with your authority, so I would assume that it had to be both you and Paul agreeing to accept her resignation.
I, that's what I, that's what I was thinking.
You're bringing up, bud.
There'd be much more additions to do that way.
In your package, you have her letter.
Right. I'll just make a motion that, as part of the select board, we'll, we go ahead and approve the re, letter of record.
Resignation?
Not here, resignation for Darlene Kelly, our assistant treasurer, with all our approval.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded for acceptance of the resignation of Darlene Kelly as the assistant treasurer effective immediately. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Darlene's resignation is accepted.
So then we have the, the issue of, um, who's to sign the checks in the meantime, while we do a search for a replacement for a treasurer. And continuing our search for a, um, financial director or the adjutant's CFO.
CFO, right, we're still, I think we were still waiting for a, kind of a job description, we have one?
No, but I was aware I was supposed to bring him, but I can find him.
Well, Ernie said he would supply that.
Next, next week, uh, next meeting, sorry.
Okay.
He will be here in person, and he will supply that information.
Uh, I think sooner the better. Why, why do we wait two weeks?
I'm just saying he's going to be here in two weeks.
Right, but he could email.
Well, before we leave this meeting, you need somebody to be able to sign the checks.
That's correct.
Should it be one of the select persons for now?
If I may interject, you know, I, um, Chip laid out a pretty good plan, I thought, a short-term plan, and I would recommend that he might want to, um, tell us about that plan.
Let's hear it.
I, I could do it, but he's much more articulate than I am.
I was requested to be here, why, you're past esteemed select board member treasurer. So, yes, I'm in support for what he does, I appreciate all the things select boards do, I've been doing this stuff for over 30 years. The concept is, by statute, when a treasurer is unable to fulfill their duties or resigns, the assistant treasurer assumes the duties of the treasurer. You're in a present condition in which you have neither, an assistant nor a treasurer. The intention, for short-term, is to add Russ as a signer on the account. He's in the office and available to sign checks, there's not someone waiting to come and go. Russ, as the town manager, also is responsible for managing your budgets. Statutory. As, the fact that you don't have someone in-house who can actually process, um, finish the payroll, finish the accounts payable, read financial statements, um, that has been being done by NIMRAC personnel, and will now be done by me. And the goal of, of, and I like the CFO concept, but I'm not sure that Westminster can afford one, that I believe that you could go to a position in which you're looking for is someone with bookkeeping skills, procedural processing skills, can read instructions and follow them. They don't need to know necessarily how to read financial statements in the end. That step can still remain with NIMRAC overseeing it. But paying NIMRAC $110 an hour to print checks, do online banking and stuff like that, that's gonna be a costly thing, you're already experienced, and we need to figure out how quickly we can transition to some other, less expensive ways of a talent to get those things done. NIMRAC can still do the bank reconciliations, NIMRAC can still do review of financials. And a couple of the documents you have here tonight, or stuff Rick, Russ, and I worked on today, to present information to you that's digestible and understandable. But like I said, it's, it's very expensive for me to come down and do what is really procedural stuff. And, um, I'm not sure what you've got for best options. And in the future, what you may be looking for is to shift what the role of a treasurer in the town of Westminster is about. So that, under the manager, there is an administrative assistant, and then there may be a financial assistant, who work under the manager. They don't work under the treasurer, they don't work under the select board, they work under the manager. And that horizontal, if you will, management structure, which government's famous for, and that's what makes us so efficient, but we wouldn't choose any other way. Paul would not be, as treasurer, coming in and processing as it has been done here for years. And instead, that process would be a hired person, under the control of the manager, to oversee that the financial bookkeeping is being done.
Are we still obligated to have elections?
Yes, I think your charter says you do. But the charter doesn't say what the duties and responsibilities are in terms of writing checks.
Or pay.
And payroll, just the treasurer is responsible for providing disbursements, signing cash, making deposits, which unless authorized by someone else.
So what would the role of the treasurer be again?
A figurehead.
Meaning nothing.
Signing checks. So they, they still have all the responsibility, the steps surely a treasurer has, but the grunt work, if you will, is no longer part of that position, because, honestly, electable people are electable, not necessarily qualified.
I'm pretty sure that Ernie went over this exactly the way you just explained it when he was on the television.
So I talked to Mascoma to have a little more information here. I have Katie in my office today. She also compared with myself being a check signer and one select board member. Um, someone that's accessible at short notice, that can go to the office and quickly sign checks. My, um, personal feeling is Craig is the closest and most accessible person, typically. But I, I'm willing for anybody, but I, I just know Craig is, is...
No, it sounds like when you try to leave a job, Paul could go back and do it, he just drives over his tractor, signs it, and I can see it.
It would just be a hard thing to, when he's in Florida.
Yeah, everything, you know, things have changed, so that, yeah, I'm just not around, yeah, I can't say I'm gonna be around.
Yeah.
So you're trying to say I don't have a life and I'm around, and you're, I agree with you.
No, it's any work, compared to...
So, so if you continue, he, she also went into the cash pen and then online, um, would be done with a token, I would have a token, and Chip would have a token, so that he's able to go into the accounts, um, and do the financial, um, uh, work that needs to be done, um, monthly basis.
And then, and then you will, advertising for basically booking, right? I would assume that's...
Exactly. And still looking at, for hiring a CFO, to see if we can afford what we're truly after, and then how to make it affordable.
Is anyone on the ballot for treasurer?
No, because the, yes, two, he has two years left on his term, so I'm thinking that the next election is November, and he'll have to put that on the ballot to complete the ballots of the three-year term.
No, we would, we would ask for a lot of things.
March, yeah.
We, we can't leave the pressure shot open all that time.
You can appoint someone until the next available election.
We can go back and reappoint Paul. Paul's out. Um, okay, infer the options.
I guess the most important thing, start the ad, figure out, I guess, we're agreement on this. I think Chip knows what he's looking for, and you know what he's looking for, if you could come up and get the ad out, by the way, so we can stack. Especially because of the fact that we're coming from a town meeting that you can, you can, people know that we're looking for somebody to come in to do that.
It's not an urgent matter, if you follow what Mascoma has, has laid out in front of you, because it will be handled until you find the right person to, to fill Paul's shoes.
It'll just be handled $110 an hour.
Right, well, that's...
That's, that's...
Like I said, it's not an emergency, but yes, it makes more sense for us to get the ad out, start reading files.
Generally, it's free.
Mr. Jones.
Joe Jones, for the record, Mr. Howard's position, so I don't know who's elected, I know we have an election cycle coming up.
Yes.
Do we have any candidates that have actually submitted any interest to beyond the ballot?
We just said that he, he's got two years left, so nobody knows until tonight.
Okay, I, I...
Yeah.
You want to fulfill your, your obligation?
Yeah.
No?
He's done, done.
Do you have anybody that's put in an interest in for the position either as assistant to the treasurer in the past? Right, Russ, any emails, any...
We, we had a couple of people interested, they tried it for a short time, and then they, they sat down.
We need a treasurer.
We have no one for this one.
We need to find a treasurer and appoint a treasurer.
Might be a different duty than what the treasurer's had in the past, so that's why I have more interest in the Russ and Chip, brightening up whatever that... Righting up whatever that position is, whatever you want to call it. That, that's the position we're, we're going to hire somebody that's going to answer to Russ and Chip on putting them.
To Russ.
Right. But we're going to be overlooking it to make sure it's assembled right and gives you the right information to sign off of.
And that position will probably be part-time, I'm assuming, and we had talked at one point, or you had talked at one point about sharing that position, maybe with another town.
Now, we're, we're talking two different things here.
Wait, bookkeeper and?
We're talking treasurer. We're talking a treasurer that we have to have.
Okay, so you're talking.
Immediately, as soon as we can. But in the meantime, if we have signatures on.
And where are we statutorily on that? This is, this is all copacetic, kosher, legal, standard practice, best interest. You pick one. It's not so loose.
It's not so loose, is what you're saying? The board should appoint a treasurer. They can appoint a treasurer for a limited term until such time as they find another treasurer. And I've seen that done where we appoint on a temporary basis, Craig is the treasurer. Why? Because we're about to give him a signature. Well, he can be treasurer in our own Select Board.
Correct.
Well, the more hell then, but Russ can. You're going to sign him as a treasurer, temporary with the town of Westminster. He's a Westminster voter, Westminster. That's not a good manager in Westminster. And then.
What would it be my role then? Yes, I'm only signing the.
You're a signature, you're a Select Board Member, signature on the account. So then, at, at a future meeting, preferably the next, you actually have an external person that you can assign. You're thinking actions so that you have the position filled the next two weeks. Or if someone comes in tomorrow and you have an emergency meeting or special meeting, just to do the appointment of a different person to treasurer.
Like you said yourself, the treasurer does not have to be someone who is even in a finance, has a financial background. It's an elected position always asked. That person right now would be effectively, simply being an, hopefully, a disinterested third party who has no conflicts and would be able to sign a check.
As a resident.
And a resident of this city.
Has to be a resident, yes. Has to be a resident. I think you asked me a vote.
Okay, but did you vote as well? Yeah, please.
Two questions, I guess. So are you talking you're going to have, are checks given as required, two signatures? Or is Craig a signature just as a backup for Russ and Bill? Or does each check happen to have two signatures? So is it, your, your question kind of hit on this. Is it prudent practice to have the person who receives the invoices, codes invoices, to write and sign the check?
To me, that seems like a huge conflict. No, in any way.
Absolutely.
No, no, nothing.
Right, it could be Paul.
Are fine.
That's not what we have right now.
I understand.
Kelly is the Assistant Treasurer. She receives taxes and she also codes all of your, um, invoices and processes payroll.
About Darlene when they sent the treasurer.
Just because you have two.
Okay.
You have, you have changed the title because she is a receiver of delinquent taxes.
Okay.
Taxes, period. But.
I just want to clear for the record what exactly it is we are doing.
Absolutely.
And, but going back to what Chip said. So before we leave this meeting tonight, so we're, we're more concerned about leaving tonight where we're going. We legally should have, appoint a treasurer for the next, let's say even two weeks. What your suggestion is that tonight, the Select Board will legally say, we want to nominate or whatever, appoint Russ Hodgins as the temporary treasurer to fill that position for the next period of two weeks or so. Just so legally we have somebody.
With a Select Board Member as a co-sign.
No, 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 that's different. Treasurer, treasurer is a title.
Right.
And that's all treasurers wanting to be in the future, titled and a signer of checks.
That's what I was on the same page.
And that's all. And you've got to have that position filled. And if you were to take action to borrow money, the treasurer signs. That allows the treasurer's title to be filled by a body.
Uh, looks like someone named Kayden wishes to ask a question. Someone named Kayden.
Cassandra.
It's Cassandra. I just can't figure out how to change the name. I'm a legal voter in the town of Westminster that's very accessible. If you guys just need someone to be an interim person for the next two weeks, I'm more than available and happy to help. Just to put that out there, an uninterested, uninvolved party that's accessible to sign things. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. For the next two weeks, shouldn't it be elected position?
No.
It should be appointed. I meant whoever you appoint.
Whoever's appointed. Legally, you look for someone who would want to run for the position when the appointment is over. That's what you're looking for.
The one we appoint two weeks from now.
Yes.
As opposed to the person we appoint right now.
Right, just to fill the slot.
I think for the first time we're on the same page. Yeah. There's one thing that we get out of tonight for the next two weeks and then come back in two weeks.
Right, so the suggestion is that we appoint Russ as the interim treasurer tonight. And then probably at the next meeting, we have at least one person interested.
Russ is already the Town Manager. And I agree with Nathan's comment. I'm not comfortable with that.
Neither am I.
It's all bad.
Long-term, I'm not comfortable with.
I'm not comfortable with it at all.
So what's the other choice?
Oh, we have a citizen right here that.
He's a volunteer.
Has volunteered. For two weeks, correct?
Yep.
Sorry, Cassandra can do it for two weeks. Select Board has a chance to, that contract, that's two-year commitment that all.
Just a heads up, the video's cutting in and out a little bit, so I only heard about half of that.
Your full name?
Cassandra, C-A-S-S-A-N-D-R-A, Joyce Pedigo, P-E-D-I-G-O.
Okay, so those are the options before us. Um, it seems to me with great respect, I, I don't see how that's not a conflict. I, I just, to me it sounds, I mean, it's raw.
I'm not contradicting that. I would decide for the next two weeks until we add them, what is the choice? But I'd rather pick another choice. I don't have a problem with legally.
Statutorily, this is the right thing to do.
And so then, the question reforms. Sorry, I'm going to use your first name because that's.
Cassandra.
Cassandra. Would you be authorizing Cassandra to get onto the Mascoma accounts as a signer for two weeks?
I guess I would not feel comfortable with that. I'd want to see some references or some sort of background.
That's a good point also.
I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're volunteering. I think that's great, but.
And if she could volunteer in two weeks, yeah, that'd be great. But that was what I was, was allowing somebody to go right in and be involved with it that we have. Nothing to have background.
In terms of the, the concerns of authorization and being a signer on the checks and reconciling the accounts. I am right now the Finance Director for another municipality whose treasurer, Finance Director, was one of the same and did all three of those tests. So, never been written in the audit, but I think that's the conflict when you can both write the check, sign the check, and reconcile it. The third step's what's missing here. The reconciliation will be done by Nimrek. I can access the bank account, but I can't sign checks. I can't move money. And again, we're looking, in theory, at, this gets us two weeks to where we can research with someone in mind to take the position of a figure-headed treasurer who has an interest, has experience with money and doesn't necessarily have to know how to run payroll or accounts payable. That's the significant change in the role.
Let me ask you this. If, um, once one runs for treasurer, do we ask them for references?
No, it's a, it's an elected position.
Exactly. So what's the difference? She's a, um, this person is a citizen of the town. She's a taxpayer. We should be required to make any further disclosures as a person running for treasurer. Credit report, background check. No, back to my approach. So we can't require that.
No, but to be honest with you, running, you, I see other people have the opportunity to run against it. Nobody runs. Now, I'm glad she volunteered, but it's just, I don't, I've never been in a meeting where all of a sudden we just give somebody this authority to actually start being involved with checks that we, you know.
Well, if she was running for treasurer, she would be. That's exactly what would be there.
You would have so many days to run for treasurer. You don't get ready to get in at the town meetings and say, oh, I want to be treasurer.
But you still don't go.
But you can go in, but you can go in as a write-in, correct? And you only need 27 votes.
You can, 27.
So I could get 27 likes on a Facebook page and I could be treasurer next week if it was on the ballot.
That's right.
If you're looking for personal references, you can ask Cole Streeter. You can ask Kevin, who's sitting next to you. You can ask my father. You can ask plenty of members of the community. I was simply trying to give you guys a separate, uninvolved party because I agree with Kevin. I think it's a huge conflict of interest.
Awesome, of course. John Jones.
I just, it's on the agenda, but I just wanted to kind of step in real quick and, because Cassandra is on the economic, you know, we set up, she's one of the members as well. Participating. So I just wanted to.
Thank you. So she's known.
She's known. She's participating. So she's participating a little bit, yeah, so I just.
So we have someone who's ready, willing, and able, was known to the community, is on the Westminster Congress and Economic Community Development Board. I believe this individual is also running for the school board.
Correct.
Okay. Um, lives in the town, pays taxes.
And she doesn't need to have, and she's going to get the 27 signatures. She doesn't need to have us agree.
Absolutely not.
Well, don't think it's only. Exactly. It's not, you cannot.
There's not been no write-ins at all.
Right, if there's no write-ins, there's not a position that's. And she used as an example. I don't think she meant anything.
As an example. There's no background check.
Okay, no, I, I, I agree with that, but you can't be elected this far.
We're simply making it a.
No, but my point was, it's that, it's that easy to become the treasurer. It's not, nobody's doing a background check. No one's looking for references on me. It's simply an elected position. So it's based on how many people know my name and want to write my name down on a ballot or circle my name. It's not based on my credentials. So if you want my credentials, I've packed multiple background checks. I've worked in human services for years. Um, I have an education. I'm a taxpaying citizen who owns property, got a kid in the school district. So I'm certainly known by the community, if that's your concern. I would be happy to have no access to any money and just be signing off on checks for you guys because I was offering to do something helpful because I feel like the community got a little bit sideswiped by losing our treasurer when the position isn't going to be filled for two years.
So it's a matter of signing the checks, not having access to the bank accounts.
Well, yeah, I think that's really the only immediate need is that you got, nobody, we don't need access to bank accounts. Nobody needs money right now. You guys need your checks signed.
One of, one of the questions is the timing of getting the checks signed. So is Cassandra available on Thursday mornings or you're warned to sign tonight, do the checks are signed in the morning? And they're dated Thursdays or dated Fridays?
Dated Thursday.
Dated Thursday.
And the payroll, the checks are going to be signed because, you know, they're picking up the payroll checks.
So, so that is, that is the purpose of adding Russ, who's in the office anyway, be a signer on the account.
He's the hardest word in man in this town. He won't know that.
He'll tell you that. So.
How you, and I, I, I'm just throwing this out here. I'm, I'm listening to, to what I got with Mascoma. Who is going to be checked, literally, uh, given a token so that the cash management can be done online? That's why it needs to be two. One, and Cassandra, you're going to do this for a couple of weeks?
I thought you just said she wasn't giving the money. She was only signing the check. That's what I'm getting.
Someone has to have the, the other token. That's the two.
Again, I'm going to get back to the question before us. If the treasurer was the treasurer, would that be, would that be something they would oblige, be obligated to them?
Yes.
As statutorily, the treasurer has resigned as, as the Assistant Treasurer. Therefore, is now up through the board to appoint a treasurer. If we appoint a treasurer, then that person should be entitled to whatever necessary, um, vehicles she has to do in order to get it done for the two-week period until we find a full-time treasurer.
I think your mind of the question is, you have an Assistant Treasurer that's still on as an Assistant Treasurer. Where does that come in?
Yeah, Kelly.
You said Kelly's Assistant Treasurer. He said when your treasurer resigns, all the duties fall on the Assistant.
That's what I'm getting at here.
Did we limit her duties?
I, I.
You did. We're limiting her duties to receive funds.
She didn't, she's, she's not allowed to. It's just Chip right now.
That's a.
Okay. How do we remedy, how do we remedy that? Is there a way to remedy that?
Yeah, if you're, if you're willing to, to go through the, the process of having her token, then there is no other issue. But for only two weeks.
It's not an easy thing to do if you have to get signatures. From all the people that are, you know, small and they got a certified person to get the token. And so to do it for two weeks, I, I really think it makes much more sense to have Russ do it.
Why can't Kelly?
Cassandra wants to, you know, enter the queue for later on.
How about this? Statutorily, if we appointed Cassandra as the interim treasurer and Kelly is the Assistant Treasurer, then you have to get four pairs of eyes effectively doing that. Now, what's wrong with that? Does that make everyone else more comfortable with Cassandra having access to that information with Kelly there as well?
She would not have a token.
A token, we're discussing. Why can't Kelly have the token?
She doesn't want it. She's got a. If you're talking a conflict, that's the conflict.
Where's the token kept?
It's in my desk right at the second floor.
So the treasurer would only have it while she was in the office?
Yes, sir.
And it's in her name or his name. It, it's signed with a special number through the bank. It's assigned. It's, it's very key to.
Just one last dumb question. Why can't she be the treasurer and I be allowed to have the token? No, I don't know. I'm just asking that.
Mr. James, please, if, well, if I may, I do not, I cannot challenge the experience of several official cities. From what I'm hearing and past experience, the Select Board is ultimately liable.
That's right. Exactly right.
Your budgetary, policymaking board, responsibilities, and you have every right to appoint anything. That's really all you'd be doing by accepting this lady's offer. And Craig's point is on point. And the Select Board member will hold the chip, the second chip. If they have to meet together or they have to talk together in this day and age, which is very difficult. Two weeks. They've been really stuck in the need of.
Right. So it was a good solution to pull us out. So Craig with the token, Cassandra as the interim appointed treasurer. Does that make sense? That, that covers this statutory.
We didn't trust an outside agency such as Nimrek with a token and ability to move our money. Certainly vocal to trust the president.
Sure.
And a Select Board member.
I agree with that, thank you for your wise counsel.
So we're talking about these two weeks, and, and what happens?
We gotta scramble to get somebody.
Usually it'll have a treasure.
Who wants to be treasurer?
Well, I think, I mean, now, sometimes it's a little.
But again, I guess we shall think in two weeks.
I don't know, I think there could be some people out there who might, we want to do the job.
If, if nobody might like it, like in two weeks.
She might like it also, I don't want to speak for anyone, but. So, well, we, we get home, you, you get, I mean, you get the football, I don't want, you get the football?
You're in the office, Craig, you're having to be in the office. I'm in the office.
I, I can handle that for two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Craig, so are we in agreement?
So can I ask her a question?
Please.
In terms of bank tokens. Are we not talking three tokens? We're talking two, and so the signatures, are we talking Cassandra and Craig, and not Russ? And Craig and I have tokens.
That's the way I was thinking, now how do we get there?
Well, that's, the activity for the banking has taken place, I believe Russ has already been issued a token.
No, no, I haven't.
You haven't?
No.
Okay.
We're waiting till after tonight.
Till after tonight, okay, so, in terms of the authorizations then, if the board chooses to appoint Cassandra as treasurer, Craig has her assistant to have the rights to hold a token and perform online banking, and NIMRE, or specifically Willis D Stern's the second, to hold the token.
Like that, man. Is it D's name, or?
David.
David.
To hold the token for purposes of preparing the duties affiliated with the financials. Until such a time as a formal treasurer and assistant and treasurer can be placed.
Well said.
If you could both make that statement shorter and to the point, I'll second it, so, I'll, don't move it.
Really?
Because you see that as a privilege.
Uh, that gets us to where we need to be, you, you've now met your obligation for a treasurer, it's not for two weeks, it's until you're done, and you may kick it out, you may stipulate this is. The issue ultimately will be then, uh, signers on the account, Craig and Cassandra.
So, we're going to nominate, appoint, I mean, Cassandra as the town treasurer, and appoint me as the assistant town treasurer.
Yep.
For two weeks.
No.
So I think two weeks, I imagine, it's only temporary, temporary, interim, interim.
Interim treasurer, so, but it doesn't have to be for an interim, because at any given time, anyone can walk in and resign on it.
Yes, we've known.
This, this way, you filled it, you, you filled, you met your obligation of separating duties. Um, the token appointment for me is to actually be able to do the uploads, downloads, pay your taxes, online, all that stuff. Our health as well.
Makes, makes sense.
And, and, and then, the goal would be, uh, at a starting level, to get a bookkeeper. You know, if you're head for CFO, it would be a long time for CFO, if you're head for a bookkeeper, yeah.
Okay.
If you head for, that gets you to the point of which you can still operate, employees and vendors continue to get paid, your financials come out, and you have oversight of these financials.
Right, hold on.
I'm struggling with CFO, I've heard it many times today.
Yep.
Did Westminster, you come to operations?
No.
Okay.
No, just a title.
So they're elected officials, why are we using CFO, or COO, or CEO, or what, explain to me?
It, it's simply a title, you know, level of expertise expected.
But it's not in the realm of our system, you're actually trying to create something that we don't have.
I'm not, I don't want to create that at all, that's all.
Good.
I want to create an assistant to the manager, it's a financial business manager.
And it sounds like you're trying to create two new payroll positions for our town as well, assistant bookkeeper, collector.
The, the collector's already there.
What happens to our tax collector, what happens to our receiver of taxes, are those positions gone?
No, they're still, you're doing.
Yeah.
Then why do we need, you said looking into hiring a bookkeeper?
Bookkeeper does the process of finishing the tasks of payroll, online banking, and housekeeping. Those steps were done by the treasurer?
I don't want to tie up the debate, but I may come in at other times, I'm also struggling with, if we can entrust you with a chip to look at financials and you did say you received tax payments.
I'm not.
I'm pretty sure I've said it, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a receiver of any of those.
I think it's two weeks, Paul, we'll pick up the lack of labor bar. We got kind of thrown very.
He left all of it tonight.
Yeah, but thank you for excellent, excellent points, then let's address them down the line, but let's, we can't, let's move forward.
Before we lose her, let's.
Yeah, absolutely, we will lose her.
All right, I'll make a motion to, um.
Thank you.
To, um, to appoint Cassandra.
Joyce Pedego.
Um, to the.
As treasurer.
As treasurer, and.
With Craig being the assistant treasurer, is that a different motion?
No, that's my motion.
Do them all.
And Craig now an assistant treasurer. Who will hold the, what's the thing?
Token.
Token, who will hold the token.
Also the token.
Well, you don't, should that be a token?
Willis A Stern will hold, Willis D Stern will hold the second token.
As long as he's employed by NIMRE.
Okay.
Well, I'm saying, the question now.
A good point, okay, um, that is the motion, you have a second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, Cassandra Pedego, you are the new treasurer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you there?
Oh, you're frozen now.
Can you hear us, Cassandra?
No, I can't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does she know she just got appointed?
Did you hear you just got appointed?
I did, I heard that.
Thank you. Okay, I think that finally moves us off schedule deficiencies.
Killed that cookie, yeah, sir.
Repeatedly, uh, okay, so, well, moving on to seven twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one storm update.
Um, the whole picture is coming, uh, clear, and, uh, my review package, uh, the four projects that have been, uh, approved by FEMA, and that, uh, one is still going through the process, the other, uh, one is moving through a different, large, uh, job portion of the, of the, uh, recording. Uh, on your second page is actually a financial update of how we're, um, coming about. We had, um, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, um, out-of-pocket costs for the storm. Select board approved the emergency fund of a hundred and fifty thousand to be placed towards that, um, out-of-pocket cost. Select board also approved the working capital of a hundred thousand to be placed towards that, um, the debt, making our remaining balance, um, which includes the line of credit at five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three twenty-two, twenty-four. So you take that remaining balance and you, um, subtract the line of credit, so we still have a balance of unallocated expenses of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. That total is still, um, pending, but as payments come in, we can address how to, um, place, um, the money towards this, this expense. Our anticipated reimbursements at this point, we experienced one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars of estimated storm damage. This came from, um, the five FEMA worksheets plus four more that we have, uh, had pricing out there since the duration. FEMA's portion is seventy-five percent, which would pay us eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty, and seventy-five dollars. Through the state of Vermont's portion of twelve and a half percent, it'd be another hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-three dollars, excuse me, hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-three dollars. So the total reimbursement for paid expenses would be nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This is going to be stretched out over the next several months, um, we are anticipating, um, a, um, a check very, very soon, state Vermont has been obligated to different projects, so that means it's therefore to get us, um, for paperwork and then we can get the checks. Uh, we should have them shortly, they promised beginning of February, it is now February twenty-third, so, um, we're still waiting for the, the state to, uh, get caught up for this, uh, disaster. So that brings us into a question that was asked today about our, um, net unreserved surplus, that we are, um, asking to cover our, our expenses, um, in a article on the morning, that's coming up in April. Our net unreserved surplus, um, with help of, uh, chip, is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's what the article will state, to put towards, um, expenditures of the storm. So, the answer to that question is the six thirty-five oh eighty-one is really truly not the bottom line, because the assigned money to reduce taxes last year at town meeting was a hundred thousand, the emergency reserves of a hundred and fifty thousand was used, approved by the select board, and also the working capital of a hundred thousand, and then we also have a, um, a funny balance, um, for recycling, which, um, we will need to come back to you with, uh, a recommendation of how to remove that. That used to be for our transfer station and any expenses that we had towards it, so, that is not, um, immediately funded any longer, so we'll be coming back with a recommendation for that. But again, that all adds up to two hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, um, to be voted on at town meeting, to cover our expenses. Which is still, uh, on the ball, the money is, is going to be trickling in, um, in the next, hopefully in the next month and two, month or two.
I have a question, Russ, so on the financial update, you said the remaining balance, this includes the line of credit, I don't really understand, so the five hundred thousand is added?
It's still going to be paid back, that five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents needs to be paid back, we have a line of credit that we need to pay off, and we also have the unallocated, um, expenses of three hundred and sixty-three, so that's all that was, is just to say, this is our total debt at this point.
Right, I understand that, so, you said this includes a line of credit, so is that the, you added the line of credit that we spent into the eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand that includes? So you said remaining balance, this includes a line of credit.
You have a total expense of eight hundred and thirty-eight, you've taken out the two hundred and fifty that you approved, that is the, the debt that we, um, have, has, has received with unallocated monies, then we took out the line of credit of two hundred and twenty-five, so still, we have three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that we just have used out of the general fund.
Right.
We have to, to address.
Yes.
Before the end of the year. Or as Chip mentioned today, you can go into another fiscal year with that storm debt, if you so choose. Fending our, our payments coming in, maybe thereafter. Did I answer it?
Do you, uh, I'm getting tired, and you kind of just laid this all on me, can you put this back on the den there for a minute?
Yeah, it's, it's an update, um.
On it, I'm not being critical, but it's taking me a minute to digest the ins and outs, and the, like she said, the, where we're buying on that, where we didn't buy on that. And I, I can just kind of hand it to us, and just kind of.
Okay, so we, um, we will table this to the March ninth meeting as a priority, and everyone, please review, now, thank you, uh, you made a good point, um, everyone, visualize themselves with, uh, what we have to do, and make sure we, we get this knocked off the next meeting, okay?
There's no actions to be done yet, but again, it's a work in progress, whole thing is coming in.
Understood.
It probably will have changed, I'm hoping it will have changed by the March ninth meeting, but I will.
And thank you for your hard work on this, um, I know you're working hard on it, thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Governor, a question.
Yes, sir, Nate.
I wholeheartedly agree, you have to leave fifty-five minutes behind your time on, so let's move on, tag on to this, my questions around all this, or, I can't get any of these numbers to add up.
I told you I was going to have a hard time.
All these, only add up six hundred and something thousand. We pay it out-of-pocket, eight thirty-eight, but FEMA's going to pay us back one point one?
Yes.
Why do we even need to have any money, they're paying us back more than we spent.
Not true. You're looking at, at costs out of the storm fund, what we submit to FEMA, or Westminster submits to FEMA, is use of your own labor, your own equipment, and your own materials, which were born costs out of your regular budget, in the general plan.
Okay. But all the eight thirty-eights are on road crew.
Well, the eight thirty-eights, everybody like, their own road crew.
On top, eight thirty-eight plus the road crew, it's one point on.
Yes, yes, and administrative.
That's exactly what we need to come back.
This is, this is six hundred and thirty-five.
This is only five out of nine projects, we haven't got to the other four, this is up to date.
That's why it is, I'm with Nate, I, I, I've been hearing it like, okay, I've kind of seen this, I've seen this, I've seen that, but I'm kind of still like, where's the other ones and, and how much did that Chuck do, and then do, and I just thought it could come back, and we're going to ask, keep up and ask him, like, what?
The stock of folders that it takes to submit, um, a single project can, can be a fistful, and try and boil it down and say, okay, let's just take everyone, using one number, and the goal here was to try to present that you're focused on trying to zero out your storm fund before June thirtieth, and yet, you will receive more money than what that fund reflects as total cost, primarily because highway guys continue to get paid, that they were paid out of their highway budget, the trucks are billed for use, and you submit to an equipment fund, a fine amount of money. And so, all of those factors are really your local contribution, on top of the two hundred and fifty thousand you put in. And in the end, I think when you get to June thirtieth, twenty-three, this fund may be holding for you a half a million dollars of surplus. Which, in my opinion, goes back to the highway fund, because it's all highway related.
Chuck's not used to getting it back, so he doesn't want it back, it's just confusing, okay?
Well, and we'll see that clearer after Chase and Charles goes.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, the, the numbers that don't add up, what's been submitted was the black and white sheet. The total, everything we know, are the numbers almost two pages. To give you the idea of forecasting, yes, you show eight eighty-eight, but we're looking at nine seventy-three coming in, who's worried about cash? I'm not worried about cash, and, and that's why, yeah, you're trying to add things together, understanding how FEMA. Understanding how FEMA works is why I worked with it today to say, you know, present these numbers, because if they see that they're going to get almost a million dollars back on something that is cash out of you, eight hundred thousand. I'm not worried about two seventy-one being transferred into that fund. You might get three hundred thousand before the end of the year and the voters are going to tell you to put another two seventy-one into it, which is how you're going to build yourself up to this twenty-three surplus in that fund.
Well stated. Nate?
Again, about half a million surplus again.
Yeah. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry, Russ.
No, that's good.
If you're good, you don't seem to be needing for anything else.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Brilliant.
Oh, don't worry, it'll be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, all.
I did too. So also in your packet, you have a letter from the state of Vermont, just explaining what the holdup is, the explanation of how to, what you expect and that. It's just an FYI.
This is from Christine Seiko?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Not under that.
Okay, USDA grant funding.
In front of you, you have the master copy of the grant agreement that the select board need to sign. We're finding out that this is going to come with some painstaking documentation after the fact, so just double checking to make sure that you're still for the hundred thousand dollars that we're going to receive from them towards the Piggory Road and the Van Jock.
Oh, John, John, sorry, John.
I didn't have the package, maybe I didn't grab it, but it's good to invest a little money to get greater selling products forward. So if there's any question about moving forward with this, I strongly ask the select board to do that, so that we may invest a little, you could get a greater selling rate because there's other projects on there where they're a little bit at risk.
Thank you, John.
But instead of naming this project, I couldn't.
Piggory Road. It's actually on one slide, it's not the call.
Which one?
Erosion of the van, that's even toward that road.
Is Piggory Road still drivable? Is Piggory Road still drivable?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Okay. So Russ, what are we doing?
I don't know. We're trying to figure out what page you're talking about.
The top page to this.
The top of the table. So this one here.
That's for your information. Those, that's just documentation that I gave you so that you could read it and actually understand how much paperwork is going to be involved.
And they're asking us for all our signatures on this page?
That's correct. That's authorizing the town manager to go forward with this grant.
As a motion required.
You already, you already did, Russ.
That's right, you did, okay. Thank you. Anything else on USDA? Okay, nothing signed. Docking the road, bridge standards, this was tabled.
That's correct.
Has everyone had a chance to memorize themselves?
If you're, you have to make a motion.
Yeah, is anyone, is anyone not clear?
This certificate of compliance. I'm going to approve this certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory for Westminster has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Have you, how many people on this board have seen or know what the orange book is?
What?
The orange book, which is where these standards come from. When it was reprinted, they all got hard copies.
I have.
Okay.
You'd be asking me to read it? No.
Okay. I think it would be good to, as people come on aboard, they should get that standard, they should get that book. I didn't get that. Like Chuck didn't get that book, but I didn't get it from any other way, any other place. I don't know how you go in, I don't know how you go in without them. I guess it's fine. Just a statement.
Do you need to know?
Someone had his hand raised.
Oh, please.
No, no, I was, I was.
John.
I just wanted to tag on to the orange book and this, which you're approving, this is also a light item that helps the town establish their LHMP status for refund that twelve percent we get now instead of the seven. When you approve this, it's one item of seven that we get the best for, and that's how FEMA and the state of Vermont say here is your portion. So I just wanted to articulate the importance of this, if you will.
Thank you.
Maybe your standards are up to that orange book.
Thank you very much. WCECD committee update.
Yeah, so I'm here to present the organization that we have taken up in the last meeting. The printing votes is the actual terms and the positions as you requested. And I would ask the select board to take a motion to approve the terms and votes assigned to those. If anybody wants me to clarify anything, please ask them. I am here, I'll just kind of go through it for the record. Cynthia Staudt is the committee chair, a term of three years. Chris Hackett is the committee vice chair for a term of three years. Cassandra is the committee clerk for a year, for a term of two years. Bobby Chilber, two years. Chris Potter, our DRB chairs for a two-year term. Terry is a planning commission chair for one year and myself, John Jones, one year. Again, when you go into meeting and you start making motions for chairs, these are not easy to work out. It's just our diplomatic process, which is great, so that's how we get there.
Well, thank you for getting this all set up and watched.
Yep.
And if you have us down there, obviously we can attend and whatever we wish.
Yeah, the select board has an open revolving seat for whichever member.
And the town manager.
And the town manager.
Okay, and you'll let us know too, you'll keep us informed of what's going on, right?
Yes, we will come back to the board with updates and, you know, passing the board on certain things. And we'd also like the board to feed back any thoughts and details at work, commentary for the community, if you will.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, new business discussion, bridge number five repair.
Over the Saxons River, bridge number five, we just got some unsettling news. The state's initial estimate for that project was two point one million dollars. That's what we've been working with for at least two years. And our portion was fifty-six thousand dollars. We've been paying right along for the engineering of that bridge with the understanding of fifty-six thousand dollars was the, is the maximum that we would be looking at. They finally got the bid out and final bids were received and only two contractors replied and the low bid is three point five million dollars versus the two point one estimated, which the state of Vermont is expected to accept the Renaulters bid of three point five million dollars, which equates to the town owing approximately a hundred thousand dollars as our portion. So it went from fifty-six to one hundred and the explanation that I got was lack of materials for most contractors. They typically get roughly twelve contractors to bid on a project like this. Some can't get the materials in a timely manner in the appropriate time that they've allotted. The cost of the materials has inflated so much that that's half of the inflated cost, trucking of the materials and labor costs.
So we don't have a choice, all right?
We don't have a choice. I'm literally just letting you know that our fund that we've been trying to pad for the next bridge.
Well, basically it's costing us fifty thousand dollars more.
Twice, yep.
That's correct.
And we have sixty-three thousand in the bridge fund, that's all we have right now, right?
I don't know if we have any, to be honest. I think we're, I think we're up to that.
And when we have to come up with a hundred thousand?
We've been paying out of it constantly for the last year and a half, so I will find out how much we have in it and still supposedly tasked to go in between June and September with a sixty-day closure somewhere in that.
Okay. Any more comment? Thank you, Russell. Moving on to appointment list, first draft.
This is just, like, I give it to you.
Oh, John Jones, sorry.
It's on the top, I'm going to chair.
Oh.
And I'll let you finish it then if I was.
So this is just your first draft, this is a work in progress. The red is people that I've confirmed. I haven't put a lot of time to this. In fact, we have one person standing here that we probably could get an answer from. Cole, you want to still be the fire lord?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
So anyway, if you, if you know of anybody that can fill a vacant spot, that'd be great. But again, it's a work in progress, we'll keep you updated and still at full.
Thank you. Legal documents.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
I would definitely like to address this draft.
Please.
My question, so I traversed down, obviously my current goals and responsibilities as an appointed interregional planning commission, I see two other names in those slots. My question is, when did these folks request to be on the planning commission for this next calendar year? And it's, how did we come about this list, I guess is the overall question.
This was last year's list, John, and you're not red, but I should have changed you because I knew you were still on it.
Am I, do I have the line list here?
I just had, you just don't have the color going.
Yeah.
I just printed one off and it's black and white. The red are.
Oh, okay, this is why we're speaking. So am I still good for this if I want to participate or am I just looking rather?
They'll, they'll adopt this whole list and to be honest, we never get anybody off. But I am asking Greg to see if he wants to be the select board rep, that's next meeting when they reorganize.
I guess where we're going is I currently serve on five committees, I chair one and we have agendas planned out, so I'm not going to be honest after this day, right? You know, that's, as representative, you got to let people know these things. So am I misinterpreting?
You're misinterpreting. This is just a work in progress.
I disregard that one that was in the past.
So we know Bobby is gone, we have to cross her off.
We need more business begging.
Begging, yes.
No, no, I just don't want to try out too much time here on it. I owe courtesy to the people I serve, the community of interregional, thank you, hundred and fifty thousand, that's proper, and so we're good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other input? Okay, let's move on to legal documents authorized to sign.
So we got a response from our legal counsel for three items. First one is I need a motion to be able to sign this document, which the first one is for the Williams estate. So that is the house on our road that we cleaned up and we have some significant costs in cleaning up the site. There is no heirs that are interested in the property so that hence we'll go back to the town and we can get our money from the estate reimbursed for pocket for out-of-pocket expense. So I need authorization to continue this process and sign these documents.
Discussion or entertain a motion?
We'll sign the document.
Authorize the town manager to sign the document.
Oh, why should I, the town manager?
Thank you.
Motion has been made to authorize the town manager to sign the documents.
Seconded.
And seconded.
Like Craig?
Yes. All those in favor?
Regarding the Williams Lions.
Okay, so let's, you're correct, sorry, I'm skipping ahead, so let's be specific to it, right? So the first one is for the.
Williams Lions, the third.
Williams Lions, the third estate?
Estate, we're trying to create an estate so that we can get paid for the out-of-pocket expenses.
Okay. Next item?
I need a motion on that one.
We did, we seconded. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The line of state passes, you have authorization.
I'll make the motion on the second one, that we authorize the town manager to sign the state for William Traverro, the third.
I'll sign it.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The town manager has authorization to sign for, what was that?
William Traverro, the third.
William Traverro, the third.
That's it. The third one is, is just a clarification that we asked for many moons ago for the disallowed property on David Road. It's just legal opinion, in your packet to give. No action needed unless you go against that legal opinion and want to proceed.
I'm agreeing to it.
Confidential written on the top.
Got it. Okay. I got it. Do you have a motion on that or?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, moving on to managers report.
Just quickly, town hall front entrance has been worked on, the floors are sanded and they are now painting the walls and ceiling. Just an FYI, voting will be held at the town hall on March first from ten to seven P.M., ten A.M. to seven P.M., excuse me, on March first. And in your packet, just an explanation of the special notice that we put together, and I say we, Chuck made mention that our roads are taking a huge hit by having our trash trucks go up each and every leg of our road system. And so we put together this.
...estimated, which State of Vermont is expected to accept the Renault others bid of $3.5 million, which equates to the town owing approximately $100,000 as our portion. So it went from 56 to 100, and the explanation that I got was lack of materials for most contractors. They typically get roughly 12 contractors to bid on a project like this. Some can't get the materials in a timely manner in the appropriate time that they've allotted. The cost of the materials has inflated so much that that's half of the inflated cost, trucking of the materials and labor costs.
So we don't have a choice, all right?
We don't have a choice. I'm literally just letting you know that our fund that we've been trying to pad for the next bridge...
Well, basically, it's costing us $50,000 more.
Twice, yep.
That's correct.
And we have $62,000 in the bridge fund. That's all we have right now, right?
I don't know if we have any, to be honest.
I think you're cool.
And when do we have to come up with $100,000?
We've been paying out a bit constantly for the last year and a half, so I will find out how much we have in it. Still supposedly tasked to go in between June and September with a 60-day closure somewhere in that.
Okay. Any more comment? Thank you, Russell. Moving on to appointment list, first draft.
This is just, like, I give it to you...
Oh, John Jones, sorry.
It's on the top, I'm going to chair.
Oh.
And I'll let you finish it then, if I was...
So this is just your first draft. This is a work in progress. The red is people that I've confirmed. I haven't put a lot of time to this. In fact, we have one person standing here that we probably could get an answer from. Cole, you want to still be the fire warden?
Sure.
Thank you. So anyway, if you know of anybody that can fill a vacant spot, that'd be great. But again, it's a work in progress. We'll keep you updated and fill in the hole.
Thank you. Legal documents.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
I would definitely like to address this draft.
Please.
My question, so I traverse down, obviously, my current roles and responsibilities as an appointed two regional planning commission, I see two other names in those slots. My question is, when did these folks request to be on the planning commission for this next calendar year? And it's, how did we come about this list, I guess, is the overall question?
This was last year's list, John, and you're not red, but I should have changed you because I knew you were still on it.
Do I have the line list here?
I just had... You just don't have the color going. I just printed one off, and it's black and white. The red are...
Okay, this is why we're speaking. So am I still good for this if I want to participate, or am I just looking, brother?
They'll adopt this whole list, and to be honest, we never get anybody off. But I am asking Craig to see if he wants to be the select board rep. That's the next meeting when they reorganize.
I guess where we're going is I currently deserve about five committees. I chair one, and we have agendas planned out, so I'm not going to be honest after this day. You know, that's, as representative, you gotta let people know these things. So am I misinterpreting?
Misinterpreting. This is just a work in progress.
I disregard that one that was in the...
So we know Bobby is gone. We have to cross her off.
We need more business begging.
Begging, yes.
No, no, I just don't want to try out too much time here on it. I owe courtesy to the people I serve, the community of the regional... We're good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other input? Okay, let's move on to legal documents authorized to sign.
So we got a response from our legal counsel for three items. First one is I need a motion to be able to sign this document, which the first one is for the Williams estate. So that is the house on our road that we cleaned up, and we have some significant costs in cleaning up the site. There is no heirs that are interested in the property, so that hence we'll go back to the town, and we can get our money from the estate reimbursed for pocket, for out-of-pocket expense. So I need authorization to continue this process and sign these documents.
Discussion or entertain a motion?
Authorize the town manager to sign the document.
Oh, what's the town manager's?
Thank you.
Motion has been made to authorize the town manager to sign the documents.
I second that.
And seconded?
Correct.
Yes. All those in favor?
Regarding the Williams Lions...
Okay, so let's, you're correct. Sorry, I'm skipping ahead, so let's be specific to it, right? So the first one is for the...
Williams Lions the third.
Williams Lions the third estate?
Estate. We're trying to create an estate so that we can get paid for the out-of-pocket expenses.
Okay. Next item?
I need a motion on that one.
We did, we seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The line estate passes. You have authorization.
I'll make the motion on the second one, that we authorize the town manager to sign the state for William Traverro the third.
I'll sign it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. The town manager has authorization to sign for, what was that?
William Traverro the third.
William Traverro the third.
That's it. The third one is just a clarification that we asked for many moons ago for the disallowed property on David Road. It's just legal opinion. It's in your packet to give. No action needed unless you go against that legal opinion and want to proceed. Confidential written on the top.
Got it. Okay. I got it. Do you have a motion, Matt, or...
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, moving on to managers report.
Just quickly, town hall front entrance has been worked on. The floors are sanded, and they are now painting the walls and ceiling. Just an FYI, voting will be held at the town hall on March 1st from 10:00 to 7:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., excuse me, on March 1st. And in your packet, just an explanation of the special notice that we put together, and I say "we," Chuck, made mention that our roads are taking a huge hit by having our trash trucks go up each and every leg of our road system. And so we put together this quick notice because we're getting that rainstorm on Friday. We had no idea what that is going to do to us, so we put this together. We had them place it on trash cans, and that the roads that are highlighted here are the ones that we are allowing the trash truck to come down to, so we're asking taxpayers to either wait a week until their roads dry, if they can handle two weeks worth of trash, or if they can't, they generate too much, then please bring it to the designated nearest road in their trash bins. They can't just put bags out because of the animals, especially in roads such as Old Athens, where bears are definitely apparent. So we're going to try it. It's a work in progress. We've already found a couple little quirks that we're working out, but for the most part, we think it's worth the saving of a lot of repair and a lot of dollars to our taxpayers.
So is this now expected to be the fact because it was, some people, you know, we called and it wasn't, I know there were a lot of trash out in the roads this morning, but...
So this morning was froze. If you read the flyer, it says that, you can look at the town's website or our Facebook page for Highway Department, that we update daily. And I check the roads, I, the Highway Department, checks the roads every morning, and we let the rubbish company know if there are any roads that they shouldn't be on, such as, like today, Kimball Hill Road itself completely fell apart. And I've also got all the fuel companies, propane, heating fuel, FedEx, UPS...
You've been in touch with them?
They're all on a mass email. So when I find a road that they shouldn't be on, I shoot them all in there, telling them to stay off that road.
Thank you, Chuck. Awesome. Nice idea. Yes, Nate?
Cassandra Kane has her hand raised.
Just real quick, Tanner, I didn't get a fly.
Just a moment, just a moment.
You should have got one being on camber. It should have been attached to your trashcan with this wind.
Monday?
You're Monday?
It was the night, not good for us. We're a Friday pickup, so Thursday, we did our door.
What, the...
Monday.
Monday. Yeah, she should have gotten one. They should have put it. They put some in the mailboxes, and they...
Just this past Monday, they were on the road as I was leaving, trying to wait, and I waited, and he waved, and rolled the window down. I said, "Thank you very much."
They didn't hear.
They gave me something, didn't tell me anything. So I...
I'm sorry.
I'm sure people are aware of this.
Again, we're hoping, we're hoping people aren't going to come give you that. But again, keep your eye on the website and the Facebook page for road closings. Right now, we didn't have any, so it's not on the website.
Roads are completely closed, but just, so how do I go in and do it, why not do it?
You look at the, you can call me or you...
If your roads fall apart, and your roads are muddy, right, then chances are. But it says right there, check the website or the towns or the Facebook page for Highway Department.
Good chance if it's 28 degrees or colder, you're going to let everybody go through.
Correct.
If it goes over 32, that's what we should be saying.
If it's 50 degrees and raining, chances are pretty good. If it's February, roads probably might.
Just stack them all and set us on the scent of swirly lead band.
I, you know, we're just trying to...
I need one. My bag is the worst going down, so.
We're bringing them up from the water.
What's that, what is?
My bags.
You think my bags are worse going down? Oh, you should leave it.
No, maybe I got one of them. No, I, I, we're trying. I agree with you. I'll do it. I just, first I heard.
Like, Ron, Cassandra, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, comments slash concerns. So we, we have a contract with a trash removal service, and in theory, if we have a contract with them, they would take into consideration our infrastructural needs, such as tiny dirt roads that maybe can't handle their one-ton bald tired pickup trucks. But I would assume, knowing Rogerio's business, they have smaller trucks available to them. So unless there's some sort of reduction in costs that we'd be paying for them not to be traveling those roads, I would think that we would still expect them to collect trash from those areas and accommodate for residents who either don't have vehicles that can fit their trash cans or don't have the physical capability to walk their trash cans down the road. But I think, although this was a good idea to save the small roads, I live on a small road, so I get that, I don't think it's well enough thought through. I witnessed a very elderly woman dragging her trash can in the cold mud by herself and was kind of offended, knowing that she's a taxpaying citizen who has trash removal, and little did she know, the trash truck went down her road that day, and she didn't even need to drag her trash can out. But given that she doesn't probably use the internet very often, she was not aware of this. So although I appreciate the effort, I think that it's Rogerio's responsibility, more or less, with a contractual agreement to handle this versus our individual citizens to have to lug their trash in their private vehicles.
Thank you very much for your observations and your input. Yes, Chuck?
I believe it says in the contract that the Highway Department will use their trucks to pick up trash when the roads are muddy. So it's really, again, wouldn't be sick for us taxpayers, anything, by not doing this. But we would have to turn around and do it when we should be doing road repairs. That's what's happened in the past, and that's what we're trying to help eliminate.
Sounds like a wacky contract.
Thank you, Josh. I was just thinking that.
Don't disagree. And then...
Well, I, I... Would be that we did a poor job. I didn't know about it. I've never seen somebody operate, and people call me, oh, since I've been here, to be honest with you. Oh, how, where'd I go? I said, "What are you talking about?" I didn't get it. I didn't know anything about it. And, and, just, Epple, what she's saying, okay, I'm not against it, but there were some old people on the Birdsville Heights that maybe should have been gone door to door and said, "Hey, we're going to change. If you need help," I would have volunteered to take my pickup to go help them. But I don't know who was around, who got the information, other than I had a lot of people going, "Where do we go with it?" I guess you go down the main road. I never had a conversation about it. I just think that we should have had the select board involved, number one, and the select board informed, so we knew, so we can handle calls like that. That's all. That was my criticism. Not that it ain't a bad idea what you're doing, not against it. It's just that...
With all due respect, I've been talking about this for over a year.
First time we've done it.
And then the last one, right. Unfortunately, that's right. It was done, spread the mold between. I'm sure that it's done on the ball before. So I agree.
Okay, we'll get there. We'll get better. It's always about getting better. Yes, Paul?
I'm not going to argue, but I do appreciate the conservation for our roads, and then after it is a short season, with the others' concerns already addressed, I'd just like to point out that I did work in that industry, and actually told Rogerio as well. And Rogerio's has been setting a small truck up on the road since Christmas time. I don't know what the reason is for it, but they were already using a conservative method to break our power stuff on that particular road. So it was kind of surprising to see that we hadn't dragged down the main road.
No, no one's a good place in Birdsville Heights to even find it. That's what everybody was saying. We're not, there's no room to put it. I just think that if it was affected Birdsville Heights, we should have notified them and made sure everybody knew what to do. I don't think anybody was against what you were trying to do. It's just, where did we do them, how do we do them, that's all. Just the lesson.
We'll get better at it.
Yep.
We'll make it better, and we'll get it to a good, a good place.
One last bit with this one. Unless it's in a subsection, I don't see it on the council website.
It is not, because there has not been a closing yet. When there's a closing, we will put it on the front page of the...
This one's on the town website.
That was not on the town website. You're exactly right.
Was it, was it?
Was not.
Was not?
No, that's the whole issue. People start calling me, and I'm going like, I don't...
No, you tell my page, that was on my Facebook page. I know I've been following that website.
Just started, yes?
I just see a lot of issues with this, and I was wondering, does the town hall website have a newsletter? That they, like an email, mass email that they send out to everyone? If you have that, and you send it out to everyone, you can put on there, "Did you receive this?" And everyone who receives it can click that they did, so then you can get a number of who has it and doesn't have the information.
Great idea.
How do we assemble emails?
Just ask, send out a letter.
Yeah, request information, yeah.
Permission. If you're interested, you get notified by us.
That's a great idea.
Give us your email. If you didn't put it on a mass email, and that's all Chuck would have to do, is say, "Okay, at least there's 430 people who have emails from Westminster, and you can send it that day, that time." This really is what we've been talking about we should be doing.
We'll, we'll take that as your advice as well.
You talked about it.
I know, but if you're wrong, which they went to and contacted parents, what I'm saying, we're asking information. Anybody in town or Westminster that wants to give us your email, we'll put it on the mass email, and we can, but we got your permission because you gave it to us, right? We will then send you out this notice or any notice that came up that was important, and people, a lot of people would say, "Yeah, here's my email, let me, so you can let me know." If you're going to change the day where Rogerio picks up the rubbish, because it's snowing out, you can send a mass email out right away to everybody to know.
The only, the only problem is not everybody can hear. Mostly, everybody has a phone, not everybody else can hear.
No, but you're asking them to give permission, and that, a lot of people would say, "Yeah, here's my email."
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Even last thing's basically.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll get it better.
Just a thought.
Lot of, lot of good ideas. Manager report concluded?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Or the commissions?
Nothing to report.
Other business?
Well, we have...
Okay.
I'm towards a division.
Yes, Paul Bagg.
Just, I wanted to identify myself as the newest member of the ARPA committee. Also, your newest chairperson is the same.
Great, Paul. Paul is our new ARPA chairman.
By the way, from the record, they can call the chief into the meeting. I just wanted to, I guess, just real quick, the structure that the board would like, the select board would like to see, the committee I set up, we have a formal structure, chair and team. When people leave that committee, some folks have asked me to have that person named up for you, or we can put them, you know, everything else. So I want to make sure that this is the onboard of the commission that are operating from current on some platform. I have a clarification from the board. Mr. Bagg didn't show up, the chief showed up. I think we're going to stay on the board, but if we're going to have people come and go, I just want to make sure the ARPA committee's not just opening doors and holding on things and bringing them back to the town to you, so get the board to declare for me, just not...
Absolutely.
So we all.
All those to approve, I'll take a motion to approve Paul Bagg as the chair, and the chief's on the board as well?
Chief, you're... I think that was the original list. Yeah, chief's on there originally, so.
You have one?
Second.
Linda Fawcett also.
Linda Fawcett also is there?
As a new member.
Okay.
Somebody going to come back to the list, and we just approved the list.
That's what I was asking from the, yeah.
Why don't you, why don't we do it that way?
Just come back to the list.
Fantastic. I think you sent an email, but let's, thanks, John. Thank you all for, thank you.
For attending and...
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, everyone. If there's nothing else?
Other business, please.
Oh, there are other business?
So the ARPA committee is a committee, not a board or commission, so I was waiting for it under this, has approved the recommendation for the Westminster Fire Department to purchase an emergency generator. It's in your packet. The details of it, they're a key part of our emergency management plan, having this generator. While Cole is standing right there, you can ask him questions about it. It is, they're one that they have now is in failure, so this building has no reliable source of power when the power is out. Cole, you have anything else?
No. We do have a generator open, so that we can get the doors open, we can keep the lights heated, keep it lit. Yeah, we battled with the local government for over a year now, so. And I don't know if you have the proposals from the script, the electric, but...
They do.
We tried for a caller, and caller just could not give us a date, so we can get a caller. So they sent us back that proposal for Cummings. We have a proposal for CAT, which the generator itself is moved up and elevated. We also got a proposal for Generac to issue. None of us were really excited about a Generac that, so I think this is better out.
John, thanks, Q.
John, I just wanted to let the board know about what we're starting to do, and this is an approved expenditure. These folks are aware, trying to bring it back. I did have a conversation today with Katie Buck, who's been in the ARPA for the GLTC. She will be coming to our next meeting, I just announced that. And we have a list of qualified expenditures, so we'll go into the select board. If it is, if you folks know, it's typically under 1.5, so you know that we're doing the right thing. It falls on your shoulders as a select to make sure all the rights, you want it to our best part, as a clear advisor, so this does fit in that.
Thank you very much for everything you're doing. If you want us to approve the submission for the generator?
I would love it.
So before we adjourn, I'll take a motion for that exactly.
I move the, I move we approve the expenditure of $28,545.64 sent from the ARPA fund for a generator for the fire station.
Motion to approve the... New generator has been motioned and seconded from the ARPA committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, generator expenditure has been approved. Anything else?
The next meeting.
Okay, the next meeting? Yes, Chuck?
They want permission to explore the bridge town garage, not a supplemental proposal.
Yes.
The park is put outside, the electric is inside, our heating system is failing on a lot. I'd like to assemble a committee and see what we can find out.
Can't stop you.
Well, I'd like to, but you're going to say absolutely not, that's stupid.
I think it's a great idea. Why don't you come back to us with three names next time?
Three names, I don't know.
You don't want too many people on there. Just three people there.
Hey, whose video is mine or yours?
Okay, so you'll do that from March 9th, and we'll come back with your committee?
Yeah.
Okay, and date of the next meeting, March 9th, 2022, at Town Hall? Great. Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you, everyone, for staying home.
At the March 9th meeting, or Cassandra, maybe in person, to speak to you. I got you, I got the answer.
Okay.
Did we adjourn?
Yes. Both new chairmen?